Okay, I think we're officially live. So with that said, we will begin the Cook County Commission on Social for the February 2023 month. With that, I will officially call the meeting to order and I will ask that we have someone from staff call and just make sure that we're identifying the commission members that are present with us today. And I'll ask Talia if she can, Talia or someone from staff if they can do that. And we'll make sure to document who's here. Welcome, welcome everyone.
Okay, so we have Chair Anaya President as well as Vice Chair Lane. Well, I also see, can you repeat your name, please?
Morgan Wallen.
Morgan Wallen, thank you so much. Very awesome, thank you. Thank you so much.
Bishop, I assist here as well.
And I miss anyone?
Steven Durlo.
Steven Durlo, thank you.
Welcome.
And then you have the Zoom.
On Zoom, we do have Howard Mills.
Hello, everyone.
Hi, welcome. I believe that is all that I see on here. We are waiting for a few other folks to join, but we want to be respectful of everyone, everyone's time. So we'll begin. Talia, can you verify that whether we had public speakers registered for today's meeting? You know, public speakers were registered. And just as a reminder for future reference and for those who are listening to us live on Facebook, the public testimony, if you do wish to provide any at any point, you could submit your request or your written comments by submitting them 24 hours in advance of this meeting. And the email address that you can request to provide public testimony or submit any written comments is seven the word district dot office at gmail dot com. Okay, with that said, we'll begin our meeting today. We are going to be switching up a little bit of the agenda and just doing very quick updates. I know that that was our the third thing on our, I'm sorry, the fourth thing, but just as you all have heard, Governor Pritzker will release the and lift the emergency declaration at the state. Therefore, as of May of this year, we'll begin to do full time and in person meetings. So I appreciate you all. I know you all joined us in December. And we had to cancel our January meeting. So as of May, we will move away from hybrid. If that is not fully permissible, we'll make sure to touch base with legal counsel to ensure that we could do hybrid. But we are encouraging all commission members to be here with us in person. I also want to remind you all, I know Talia has reached out to submit your resumes as well as your bio and the affidavit that was sent over. So pertaining to the ordinance of the Social Innovation Commission, after every term, you must be reappointed. And therefore, we need to just make sure to submit those documents so that it is part of the record and you are official members. So thank you so much for your patience. And if you have any questions, feel free to reach out to our office in regards to that. I know that there's there have been a few questions and we're hoping that those are addressed as soon as possible. So again, just to make sure to reach out to us. And again, thank you so much for your cooperation with that. With that said, I'm going to turn it over to Vice Chair Lane. I know that he has just done our updates and will be introducing our presenter today. It might not, it might not be working, but this is a mic, so I should be able to hear you.
Okay, let's hope. Would you prefer that I defer any announcements till after?
You could do the announcement.
I really have several things to bring to the attention of the commission. And thank you, Commissioner Anaya. You might be picked up? Oh, okay. So first, I would like to welcome a new commissioner, Professor Stephen Durlo, who's a professor of public policy at the Harris School of Public Policy University of Chicago. Professor Durlo earned his bachelor's degree in economics from Harvard, his PhD in economics at Yale. He's published over 100 papers on topics ranging from economic theory to econometrics to empirical analyses to philosophy. We need a philosopher, Stephen. And his substantive interests include income inequality and poverty, crime, economic growth, macroeconomics, social economics, and distributive justice. And that is short shrift of an extraordinary resume and amazing achievement. So Commissioner Durlo, we're delighted to have you with us. Thank you very much. And some of you may recall the professor did testify before the commission last year, and we found his contribution invaluable. Hence, the invitation for his to serve on the commission. And to my grant, to my very positive reaction, he was he accepted that invitation. So thanks to Professor Durlo. We will find all kinds of good things for you to be doing with us. And we appreciate your being here and ongoing. I do want to make a couple of other announcements. There was an interest by some of the working groups to secure staff. And I have had a very good conversation with the Harris School of Public Policy about having its candidates for Masters of Public Policy to serve as interns for any of our working groups. Kate Baker, who coincidentally was then the dean of the Harris School now has been elevated. She's the provost of the university and she's very enthusiastic about working with with us. So if any of you have an interest in taking advantage of their generous offer, let me know. There is a legal process that needs to be pursued from the county's perspective that we would need to comply with. But first step is, you know, ensuring that there is interest and from whom and for what purposes. And we'll move that forward. The next announcement is that the commission has historically had a working relationship with Social Enterprise Chicago, which is a 501(c)(3) organization that I am privileged to share. And among the various attributes of that relationship is we had co-hosted a series of capacity building workshops for nonprofit managers around the county. And the idea is, among other things, to encourage greater sustainability within the nonprofit community by inviting nonprofit leaders to look at their organization's core competencies and unutilized assets and identify ways in which they might diversify their sources of funding. So Social Enterprise Chicago again has stepped up and is eager to collaborate with the commission in putting on such capacity building workshops throughout the county. And I've had conversations offline with Chair Anaya, and we're already have received some indications of interest from policymakers and others that would like to host us in their various locales. So one, I call this to your attention. Two, if any of you have an interest in seeing a capacity building workshop put on within your geographic area within the county, please let Commissioner I or me know and we'll we'll add that to the list. And I think over the course of this year, we'll probably do a half a dozen or more of those. It's something that is very much within the sweet spot of Social Enterprise Chicago, whose mission includes building social enterprises, building that community and looking at ways to achieve positive social change through embracing market-based strategies. So I want to call that to your attention, but also invite you to let me know if there are any opportunities that you would like us to pursue in that regard. And then finally, I've had a very useful and I think important conversation with Andrea Saez, who is the new president and chief executive officer of the Chicago Community Trust, who is very interested in what we're doing. Their strategic plan, as you may know, continuing really in the footsteps of Eileen Gale, is seeking to bridge the economic and wealth gap within the community and through a variety of strategies. And she's tweaking that based upon recent events and current circumstances. But she and I are pursuing the opportunity to become thought partners where the Chicago Community Trust and the Cook County Commission on Social Innovation already had some testimony from folks at the trust, but in a more systematic, comprehensive way, we're going to be working collaboratively with the trust and I'll keep you posted as to the way in which that unfolds. So I think that's a very significant opportunity for one, to be able to leverage the talents, the intellectual firepower, the resources of the trust, I think is going to advance our cause in a material and positive way. So that is the extent of my reporting. Commissioner and I, with your permission, I'd like to now introduce our speaker. Do you have something you'd like to?
Yes, I forgot to update you all on the annual report. So in December, we did have a very robust conversation regarding the general updates that we had. My office already has a draft of the annual report that we will be submitting to the Board of Commissioners. We will be sharing that with you all for feedback. If there's anything that we're missing, we try to ensure that everything that was discussed at the December meeting was completely, you know, updated on there and that we had a general comprehensive understanding of what the the general goals will be for the commission, but what we've already accomplished. So thank you all for your feedback at the last meeting, the discussion. And if there is any other feedback for the annual report, I will like to submit it in in the March meeting for a receive and file and hopefully a very short discussion. So I can brag about this wonderful commission and all your hard work and everything that we've been able to accomplish. So that is the last thing, but just wanted to make sure to put that on record.
Very important. Thank you so much. Well, it's a great pleasure that I introduce our subject matter expert witness this afternoon. It's Professor Robert Vargas, who has an extraordinary resume in his own right. He's a bachelor's in public policy from DePaul, PhD in sociology from Northwestern and is currently is a professor at the University of Chicago. But also a world-recognized sociologist and what he describes as a data artist, which I want to hear more about. He is going to present a fairly provocative view, but I think a very useful view for us and about ways in which the county can overcome institutional barriers to innovation, specifically in the public safety space, by virtue and part of the source of funding of studies and how that might skew results and thereby inappropriately informed policy decisions that might be pursued. And he has some observations along those lines and also some actionable social policy recommendations about how we might overcome such barriers. So Professor Vargas, thanks very much for being with us. All of us eagerly look forward to your testimony. Thanks for being with us. Thank you.
All right.
So I know a few of you might have the already the slides. So I think we're waiting for one. Did you receive yours? I think we're waiting. Okay, we're waiting for one. And we'll hope you can. Thank you so much for being here.
Yeah, so thank you, Commissioner Anaya, Mark, for the invitation. I want to convey that everything that I'm presenting is a collaborative effort with students. One of them is here today.
Would you like to introduce the students?
Sure, John Cruz Barsetas.
Welcome.
We're glad, we're glad to have you here. Thank you very much.
If my whole team were here, they'd be able to hold back.
We'll be delighted to have them as well.
I want to say just a quick word about my approach to this topic. So in addition to asking, how do you fix individuals? As a sociologist, I ask, how do you reconfigure your systems to address problems? And so when you bring a scientific approach to public safety systems, a pressing question emerges. What is stopping local governments from innovating and what can be done about it? So let me tell you a little bit more about what I mean. Everyone in this room has probably heard these ideas before. Scale up violence prevention, support youth, invest in communities, reform the police. Our research, as well as research of many other social scientists, has shown that not only has Chicago not achieved any of these, it has repeated history. So from Chicago Mayor William Denver's racist ads depicting his opponent at the time as a quote Africa first candidate to the fake newspapers spreading racialized fear about the end of cash bail, elected officials have repeatedly misled voters about public safety to win elections. Chicago has also repeated history in its reliance on quote data science to predict and prevent crime. The photo on far left shows Chicago Mayor Richard J. Daley with his police superintendent Otis Wilson in 1963, who was previously a professor and dean of criminology at the University of California, Berkeley. Wilson pioneered the use of crime statistics to inform policing. The middle photo comes from the ICJA Newsletter, ICJA being the Illinois Criminal Justice Information Authority, announcing the creation of a new mapping software to predict crime. And on the right is the most recent example of an algorithm developed once again to predict crime. So repeatedly, these tools are introduced as solutions for police who then misuse or intentionally misuse these tools to cast a far wider net than necessary and criminalize Black and Latino communities. And so it's with this motivation and this backdrop that the rest of my talk is going to focus on two questions. Why have we had so little public safety innovation and what can we do about it? So specifically, as Mark mentioned, I'm going to talk about the role of private donations to police and law enforcement's monopoly on crime data. And then conclude with some ideas of what to do. To explain the problem of private donations, it's best to start with the familiar example, the tobacco industry. So to prevent government from linking smoking to cancer, the tobacco industry donated millions to physicians to manufacture the appearance that cigarettes were safe. This ad is a classic example of it on my slide. While it's common today for journalists to view tobacco-funded studies skeptically, it actually took years and years of research and advocacy to push back against the tobacco lobby and to regulate cigarettes. A similar problem has emerged in the public safety sector through the rise of private donations to police. This photo is from 2018, when Ken Griffin, Citadel CEO and billionaire donated $10 million to the Chicago Police Department to launch their Strategic Decision Support Centers, labs that rely on multiple forms of surveillance technologies to keep watch over high crime areas. Some might argue this is good. Local governments are strapped for cash. Public private partnerships are a reality of public policy. And those might be true, but it's also true that private donations enable law enforcement to pursue strategies that circumvent local government decision-making processes. The deeper problem is that it enables wealthy elites to dictate public safety innovation. So in contrast to a private market that relies on competition, our taxpayer-funded public enterprise, subject to transparency laws, the system of private donations to police enables a handful of individuals, many of whom don't even reside in Cook County, to heavily influence how local governments innovate. And one way that they do this is by controlling the science and forming public safety innovation. So to explore this further, my team has studied the consequences of private donations on the science of public safety. We've looked specifically at research funded by Ken Griffin, as well as three other major local private foundations. And what we found is what we call an evaluation double standard. While violence prevention organizations are subjected to the highest evaluation, which in my world is the randomized control trial, the police are not. We also find that privately funded research tends to focus on individual behavior. Now, why is this important? Let's return to the example of Ken Griffin, who has donated a lot to Chicago. So in addition to refurbishing the Art Institute and repairing the Lakefront Trail, he's also spent $50 million to defeat the Fair Tax Amendment, which would have helped the state generate additional revenue to invest in systemic infrastructural change. We should not be surprised that privately funded research tends to focus on the individual, either whether it's at-risk youth or individual police misconduct, because it pushes discussion about systemic change to the background, an outcome that serves the interests of the wealthy who either don't want to pay more taxes or don't care much for democracy. The problem is not limited to Chicago. And so a new study of ours is showing that it's a national problem that's growing. So to study private donations to police nationally, we're following the money through a data set generously provided to us by the Rastandi Center at the Booth School of Business that contains line item tax return data for all private foundations in the US, who's giving money out and who's receiving it. The data unfortunately are not complete because not everyone properly files their taxes, as we're finding out. But it allows us to paint the best possible picture of how money is flowing from private hands to police. And we found that hundreds of millions of dollars are circulating annually between private donors and the police and that these donations are very much structured. So for example, this slide shows the network of donations to the Atlanta Police Department. And the police are the dark, dark, dark blue dots here. So that dark blue dot on the very top, I realize your slides are not covered. But the dark dots at the very top, that all the arrows are pointing towards is the Atlanta Police Department. And all of the other dots beneath it in the red are private foundations. And so you could see in the case of Atlanta, at major cities like Atlanta, they have quite a few major private donors. The very next slide zooms out to show the full national net. And Atlanta is highlighted in the blue towards the bottom. It's that cloud in the blue. Hundreds of millions of dollars are changing hands annually and raising questions about who has influence over public safety innovation in local governments. The second major barrier to public safety innovation is law enforcement's control of data. And here I'm referring to both the Cook County Sheriff's Office and the Chicago Police Department. And the problem is most clearly embodied in what's called data user agreements. This next slide shows an example of the data user agreement between the Chicago Police Department and U. Chicago Urban Labs. Public safety innovation requires data analysis, and most of the time, this means researchers need to access crime data from police. And there are good reasons for these kinds of agreements. They protect the privacy of individuals with criminal records or experiences with victimization and sensitive information that's recorded in these databases. The problem is that these agreements also enable law enforcement to have a monopoly over access to key public safety data, not only about crime, but also things about police misconduct or the deployment of police officers to neighborhoods across the city. Most troubling are closed clauses, like the one highlighted at the bottom, that stipulate that the police can refuse any future requests for criminal information from their requister. Now, this clause may seem mundane to most of the people in this room, but in the world of the academy, access to data is our currency. Exclusive access to unique data enables researchers to publish, which in turn facilitates researchers' upward mobility within the profession, promotions and recruitment from higher-paying institutions. So access to data can make or break academic careers, which is why none of you should ever believe in the idea of a quote pro bono study. The police department's threat of denying the researcher access to future data represents a threat to cut off the researcher from future lucrative data opportunities. So what happens when police control access to data through contracts like these? You end up with publication bias, studies that over-report police effectiveness and under-report police harm or ineffectiveness. And so the data from this next study come from a national study of police science. So I could share in the Q and A the details of our computation and method for generating the sample of policing stance. But in short, we scraped all grants made to researchers for studying police from the largest funding agencies, then compiled all of the publications produced from these grants and systematically read all of them and coded them for what they found and their trends. And what we found is that 70% of studies that were conducted with a data user agreement showed that police were effective at reducing crime, while only 10% showed negative effects. And so to give you a basis of comparison, in the field of education, according to the Institute for Educational Sciences, where school performance is regularly evaluated, approximately 10% of studies demonstrate that schools are effective. So that 70% mark is an extremely high rate at which to find positive effects of an intervention. The results suggest the presence of a significant publication bias here at the national scale. And so while these data agreements protect people's privacy, they serve as a way to position law enforcement as an additional editor in the scientific publication process. A publication structure like this would be frowned upon if it were the fossil fuel industry evaluating climate change or the Department of Defense evaluating world peace. The fact that we simply take this research for granted explains a lot why public safety innovation is so difficult. At this point, I'm sure some of you are asking yourself, all right, Robert, you showed us some fancy graphs. Now, how does this matter for the real world? I'll answer this by telling you a story about a report published by my team on carjacking. As many of you are aware, carjacking spiked in 2020 and 2021. Explanations for the carjacking spike centered on behaviors of Black youth with city police and county leaders arguing that youth were bored and stealing cars to go on joy routes. So missing from the conversation was an answer to a very basic question. What share of carjack vehicles have been recovered? Now, this is an important question because it can shed light on the possibility that organized crime might have something to do with the carjacking spike because cars could have their VIN numbers scraped and sold out of state or overseas. So to answer this, we filed a Freedom of Information Act request for data on carjack vehicles, specifically an indicator whether the vehicle was recovered. And data provided by the Chicago Police Department indicated that just under 20% of vehicles were being recovered annually. So the orange, I don't know what color it is.
Light gray.
The light gray bar indicates the vehicles that were covered each year. This figure differed dramatically from a CBS News article that was published in January of 2022 that quoted the County Sheriff's Office as reporting a 75% recovery rate. Before we published our findings, we reached out to the sheriff's office for clarification on why our figures were so different. They told us that the 75% figure came from a simple math of 122 out of 162 cases, which drastically differed from our data set, which contained over 2,000 cases. So this meant that the sheriff's office was basing their figure either on entirely different data set or just focusing only on carjackings that happened outside of Chicago, but within the Cook County limits. So we included this exchange in the footnote of our report, which was published in April 27th this past year to much media attention. And immediately afterward, we received messages from law enforcement contesting our report. A police detective reached out to me suggesting that the data we received likely had missing values because carjacking, the carjacking report paperwork was still relying on old paper and carbon form rather than digital forms. And so the police detective suggested that the figure was closer to 80%. An anonymous pro-law enforcement Twitter account called CWV Chicago reached out to me through a direct message on Twitter claiming that the recovery rate was actually closer to 59%. And this exchange I thought was really interesting because this, whoever was behind this account, who is anonymous, was citing all of this inside information from the Cook County Sheriff's Office, presumably with access to data that someone probably shouldn't have. But in any case, they were contesting our figure with 59%. Now, why does all of this matter? The discourse generated from our report resulted in four very different estimates of the recovery rate. If this were a purely social scientific exercise, we might share our data, look at each other's code and try to arrive at the real answer, what's going on here, which we did. All of our data and code is posted publicly on our website. But this didn't happen. And but even if we wanted to, the constraining data user agreements and concerns around privacy would enter the picture. Regardless of whose estimate you're inclined to believe here, we should all be deeply concerned that questions about a basic statistic yielded such drastically different estimates. Now, we can learn several lessons from this story. If we give law enforcement the benefit of the doubt, the story suggests that law enforcement agencies are not talking to one another or they're collecting data in ways that allow for multiple interpretations. If we don't give the benefit of the doubt, some might argue that law enforcement is intentionally misleading the public by dif- deflecting responsibility for the carjacking spike by relying on stereotypes of black youth. And what I found most troubling about this whole experience was seeing leaders of youth service organizations publicly repeat the police's unfounded youth joyride explanation. And to some degree, I understand because funding for youth programs is hard to come by. And many funder, funders donated to youth organizations to try and decrease carjacking. But when you, but when youth programs need to rely on unfounded stereotypes of black youth to generate funding, that really makes things counterproductive in the long run. And two things can be true at the same time. Increasing funding for youth programming is, is a good. And increasing youth funding might not decrease the carjacking problem. Finally, it's clear that the youth joyride explanation for the carjacking spike is based on deeply flawed data. And none of this serves the public interest nor facilitate innovation. So to wrap up, the good news is that there's some useful places to start uh, doing something about these problems. The first recommendation is to invest in creating new, open access and transparent public safety metrics that are outside CPD and the sheriff's office legal jurisdiction. This means finding ways to measure public safety that don't rely exclusively on crime. Phoeys Sebastian, who is a policy director at Civil Rights Corps, wrote up a really nice report uh, that really spearheads some thinking on drafting and creating these new metrics, that they should focus on harm, not crime, maximize the use of public data, root the metric in safety, be transparent about the value judgments, informing this work and engage communities and participatory processes to define and produce the metrics. The good news is that Cook County already has an open data platform. It would just be a matter of convening stakeholders to come up with the new metrics. Investing in alternative public safety metrics opens a whole world of possibilities because when you think outside of the scope of crime, safety can be measured in more nuanced ways. These include measures of safety pertaining to the body, the environment, workplace, schools, neighborhoods, personal finance, or housing. And a county task force devoted to this could help spur innovations and invite collaborative and transparent ways to improve public safety. My second recommendation is tightly coupled with the first, uh, investing in more, in a more diverse public safety workforce that can include alternative nine-one-one responders, violence intervention workers, and community health workers. So building on other efforts such as the county's Guaranteed Income Pilot Program, it might be worth explore, exploring uh, the piloting of alternative metrics and diverse workforces in a, in a handful of county communities. Finally, I recommend the creation of a task force to work with state and federal officials to consider introducing legislation to regulate private donations to public agencies generally, not done just police. This topic raises serious questions about the functioning of democracy and concerns over quid pro quo between private donors and public agencies like police who are supposed to be impartial. This will be a difficult task because donations are technically considered free speech uh, and therefore protected by the First Amendment. And I hope my talk at the very least has convinced you about the importance, the importance of these problems. And I hope uh, you find this knowledge useful as the county forges new public and private partnerships for the future. Now, I want to end on a positive note uh, by returning to the tobacco exam. And so the image on this slide comes from the first published study in nineteen fifty on smoking as a cause of cancer. The story behind this first breakthrough publication is inspiring because for decades, tobacco-funded researchers argued that it was impossible to argue that smoking caused cancer because you can't randomly assign smoking. A true experiment, as it was argued, required a treatment and control group tracking people for decades. And just the qualities of smoking didn't lend itself to a nice neat experiment. To overcome this industry-produced stalemate, a small group of medical researchers worked with public health government officials and, and the editors of prestigious medical journals like the Journal of the American Medical Association to propose a new definition of cause and effect in medical research. And the result of this effort was the first study linking smoking and cancer. And so to be sure, smoking remains a hazard today, but this story exemplifies what can be done when the right people from multiple sectors convene to push back against entrenched interests. And I encourage the county board to embark on a similar enterprise so that it can work to redefine public safety objectives and evaluation standards instead of letting elites define it for us. Thank you for this. And a big thank you to our funders, partners, staff, and research assistants.
Thank you, Robert. Bless you. Very interesting presentation. I, I have a few questions, but I'd like to open the floor first. Any of the commissioners who might want to uh, offer a comments or have a question.
Commissioner alone? I, I'm not sure if they're working today. Yeah, I think.
Morgan, they're not working.
Yeah, they might not be working right now, but this is actually the owl's really picking up. It's picking up great on.
Perfect. Um, thank you so much for coming. I love your presentation and think it's dead on, spot on. So I'm really glad and appreciative and grateful for all the work that you and your team have done to pull this together. I think there has been some interesting work. Um, it's, and people don't think about linking public safety and the built environment, but Avast and Young has a really great vitality index tool. So some of this, some of the stuff that's linked to um, sorry, it's the age thing here. It's some of the things that we should look at within safety. They have really, really great data um, that they use that's, I mean, down to the city level, down to the neighborhood level, down to the block level around um, the quality of life and the different indicators for that. So I'm happy to make an introduction and then maybe they can even come and see.
Morgan, if you would, I would welcome that and we can have a follow-up presentation from them. That would be terrific. Thank you.
Yeah, their data is really good. A part of this, um, a part of this is important uh, that I just want to flag because I think there's a huge focus right now on, you know, crime and all of these things, but we're not talking about the data around crime. And so, yes, we have people who do pockets of housing data or education data, but there is something to be said about overall wellness and well-being. Um, and next steps for us to think about what does wellness and well-being look like? So the same way that we're thinking about new ways of cause and effect. We are using safety and security in replacement of wellness and well-being. So the solutions we design don't actually nurture any wellness or well-being for anyone. They just create this fear-based concept that we buy into on how do we keep ourselves safe, but that will always require us to other something or someone or be kept safe from something or someone. So unless we're thinking about this stuff with like that core concept of data outside of police on how we can create new social infrastructure to resolve some of these things, we are going to keep being in this loop. So I just wanted to comment and also thank you so much and make that connection.
Thank you for very useful comments. Other questions or comments? Wendy, Commissioner DeBolt, please.
Thank you very much. So um, with, in your policy recommendations in terms of.
Commissioner DeBolt, Commissioner DeBolt, if you could just speak a, just simply a little higher.
Your mic is not.
The mic is not going to work, so if we could just. Project just a little bit. Thank you.
One of your recommendations is to expand investments in violence intervention workers. And so for you, would that mean, you know, giving resources to CBI organizations for outreach, big services, all the kinds of um, programming and services that essentially would be a workforce for prevention? And so the county has done that. And so specifically, I wondered if you had, you know, thoughts about what could do. That's my question. And then just a follow-up question is, you know, whether you had any comments or insights on Chicago's the, coming out of CPD and the county sheriff's office compared to other cities? Given your thoughts on, yeah, rotation of the data may not even be helpful comparison, but.
Yeah. Okay. So with respect to violence intervention, uh, I am familiar with some of the things that the county government's funding. I think that the most important thing to do is to engage philanthropy, namely, I'm thinking of. I, I know the name, not the organization, but essentially Lorraine Powell Jobs, like, Red is funded by her, like, Ari, Ari Duncan's a great guy, is a great advocate. The money is coming from Lorraine Powell Jobs. And similar with the head of MacArthur Foundation, the Joyce Foundation. I think it's a matter of engaging those, those leaders because um, in my conversations with people in the violence prevention world, part of the, part of the, I guess, my recommendation and thinking about your question is a way to improve the public-private partnership because right now as it stands, I mean, if any of those philanthropists decide to cut the, the cord on it, everyone's hung out to dry. And, and I realize that local and state government is strapped for cash is, you know, that, that, that's an issue. And so I'm not entirely sure how you would generate additional revenue to expand and scale up violence prevention work. But at the very least, I think that if, I, I think it's a matter when it comes to violence prevention, holding the private philanthropists who are putting, who are investing in this accountable to their commitments uh, and, and, and engaging them on those fronts to see what kind of investment are they truly interested in making? And so that's, that's my, my, my main thought on that. With respect to Chicago's um, data compared to other cities, one thing that was really interesting was um, in our, in our study of national policing science, there was only one study we found that used the data used, that relied on a data, data user given with the police department that found a negative uh, consequence of the police. And it was done in Oakland by researchers at Stanford. And I emailed them saying that your study stands out. Like what, what can you, can you shed any light on the contractual arrangements that enabled you to, to show negative funding? And what they said was that Oakland's consent decree issued by the federal government mandated an openness to, around data with a wider set of researchers. And so I take that to mean in terms of data, and, and if, when it comes to opening up law enforcement's books, it's a matter of partnering either with state or federal, with state or federal partners to either draft regulations that, that alter the governing arrangements of who controls uh, certain kinds of police data. Yeah. Other questions? Commissioner Austin, please.
Couple of things I want to build on that have already been said. One is I really appreciate the idea of thinking about wellness and well-being as a part of safety as opposed to just crime and, and crime reduction. But also I wanted to come back to your point about engaging communities in a participatory uh, process. And also, you know, you mentioned the idea of philanthropy and, and their investment in a lot of the community-based organizations. There have been a lot of conversations in the last year about really how equitable is philanthropy in terms of how they place and invest their fund in community and how responsive those funds are to community voice. I realize that's a kind of big bucket to, to throw at you, but I'm particularly interested in your thoughts about uh, community participation, community voice in, in bringing forward solution for some of these issues as opposed to being dependent upon institutions to bring those solutions. I'll cast that way, why?
Yeah, I have a few thoughts. So um, the, the term community is just a buzzword that can mean all sorts of different things. And so um, and this is why I think that being very transparent parent about the values that are informing how you're defining community is crucial. Because the example that I'll give are some of the better evaluations of community policing that I've seen that indicate that oftentimes, community policing means an engagement with a very select segment of the community, which is often small business owners or homeowners. And everyone else is kind of pushed to the side. And so what that means is that concerns over property trump everything else. And so that, that, that dictates the local policing strategies. And so my main recommendation would be maybe to partner with someone who's in a social work school because the community engagement process is one I'm not particularly good at or aware of. But I think finding someone who's, who's the right expert on that would be crucial. To your question about philanthropy, is philanthropy, how, how to deal with um, equity in philanthropy? To, to speak quite frankly, you need someone like myself who's not taking money from them to be able to, and who's tenured and has the, the, the protections of tenure to do this kind of work. And I've, you know, I've reached out to some of them informally and I, I'm not, I'm not interested. I don't think it's helpful to produce gotcha research, you know, in the way that you have gotcha journalism. I would like to think that philanthropy organizations want to know how to get better and where are the biases? I remember in twenty twenty, when I was reaching out to colleagues of mine who I know take money from some of these major philanthropic organizations and brought up the issue of data agreements, it was mixed reactions. Some throw their hands up and think that, they think this is not a big issue. Others think that it's a major issue. So I think even within these philanthropy organizations themselves, there's considerable debate, which is never public, but we'll never see it. And I think that's where the engagement needs to be. And again, it, it, it takes uh, researchers that are outside of this world to do the, the data work to put this stuff out. I have no problem doing this. I feel like that's, that can, that's my group's specialty. Uh, and so you can see why, like, you need to configure uh, a certain kind of team. They each have a specialty, uh, both, I think, in, in local government and philanthropic accountability, but in someone on community engagement.
Thank you, uh, Professor Durloff. If you'd like, if you had a question?
Question, a comment, a question. And first, to begin, first, let's just go into your presentation. I'm, I'm troubled by it in the, in the good way. In other words, I'm gonna have to read that terminology studies differently, I mean, that's the serendipity. I guess the two questions were one, um, you mentioned the issue of individual versus structural explanations. And within academia, that distinction runs with proper, which is extending as a randomized controlled trial of instruction. And so I guess one thing I would like to know is your thoughts on how to cultivate data that can uh, nevertheless, allow for progress on that distinction. That seems to me one that, that, that actually is fundamental. The second, and, and related to that, it does strike me that uh, since I'm going to volunteer you for something, which is that in terms of thinking about ways that uh, the government can facilitate data, meet academics like Robert because they're going to have a vision about the identification are. Be concrete about it. If you had asked me before I came in, why is it so important to know the fraction of parts were recovered from carjacking? I would have said something, I guess, that depends on why not people just ran, you know, ran for a half hour and ran away versus tried to steal, sell it or something. I would never have thought of the organized crime explanation. And so I think that across the data, which you can't distinguish from having people who have a background in terms of theorizing to uh, to know what, what types of data are going to facilitate that. And then the final observation is what we said about the community report, which is that maybe I think are underappreciated simply as torture of data. And let me just throw in an analogy, um, which is it's often said that it's hard to know quality of futures and, and statistical techniques that people guide by, or is like procedures. But there is an undersourced of information on future quality, which is never used, which is parents. And so the serious point is to say that I think that I'm trying to ask questions about performance, forms of features, any group of individuals. Communities haven't embedded massive amounts of information. And I think one of the great challenges, or a serious challenge to social science is asking how, how, how can you afford that? But the main thing to say.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll speak to the individual and structural thing. I mean, it's like one of the central questions in social sciences. You know, uh, uh, there were times in the past, I used to think of it as individual versus structure. I think of it now as individual and structural. So I think the best way to think about it is like, is through a concrete example, like, I think that um, you know, there's, there are inter-interventions at the individual level that um, can make a difference that, you know, lend themselves to neat experiments. Can make a difference that, you know, lend themselves to neat experiments to demonstrate effectiveness. I think one of the ways that I look at the link to the individual and the structural is whether the structures are configured in a way that enable. The people who need these interventions actually get them. And I think that's, that's one, to me, one crystal clear way to link the individual and the structural. Uh, and one classic way that that's done is through like. Statistics on the take-up of social programs like Medicaid and so on and so forth. There's, you can see how there's a lot of individual-based research tailoring the intervention, the program, and then there can be. In addition, institutional-level research to reconfigure the systems. Um. So thank you.
Commissioner Cooley um has his hand up, so I want to chime in, Commissioner Cooley.
Great, thank you. Um. Really interested in thinking about, again, the kind of expansion of metrics beyond like safety. Personal safety to public health and community health and wellness. As part of those goals, we've talked about that in some of our previous meetings about thinking about how do we holistically understand. How all the working groups of the commission can collaborate to that larger end goal and public safety is certainly. One of the components, but really. As you were talking, really being able to think about. What are the other ways that we're thinking about community health and really driving those investments? And not being tied to public safety, traditional public safety is the only way to invest in public. So excited for that concept and moving it forward. Also wondering if one of the policy recommendations, particularly around the data transparency. And the concerns around the First Amendment. Getting the donations, but that writing in, so if a donation comes into a. Law enforcement division department. That they wouldn't, they could take the public, the private philanthropy, but they still, but they cannot hide the data. The data has to remain transparent, even if they are taking that in, and that would be the policy. Push, it's like, all right, you can, we, we know we can't block you from getting this money, but we can keep you from keeping this data hidden. But thank you so much for coming in.
Yeah, I just, thanks for that. It's one um thing I would add to that, which is I think that it's. Equally important to engage journalism in this because. If you're going to produce new metrics, you have to give the outside world a sense of how to make, a way to make sense of it all. And I think the default reliance on crime data is. One that journalists lean towards simply because there's nothing else to point towards. And I think that there's a lot, there's a lot to be learned about the metrics that arose. In COVID, like I, I remember, I'm sure you all remember paying close attention to the. Uh, to the infection rates uh daily, right, the, the flatten the curve thing. I feel like that's a really great example of a alternative metric that totally oriented people's lives. That was, I think, effective for a certain amount of time. And I think it's, it's. I mean, it might be worth talking to people who were involved in the creation of that metric to learn like. What, what went well from that, what didn't? Uh, because I think that something like that is, is a good. It, it is a good uh kind of litmus test for thinking about, well, if you're going to introduce a metric and it's going to take hold in the public. What are, what are some of the things that you have to take into consideration? Because just like crime data, like those metrics, as we know, very. Quickly got, became under attack from uh certain political interests. And so you also, while you're planning all of these things, you also have to anticipate. The efforts to delegitimize these additional statistics and these metrics.
I have a question or two, if I may, Robert. I'm interested in the relationship between the uh data user agreements. And FOIA. And I understand that there's a First Amendment's protection associated with the donation. But I don't know that that extends to disclosures publicly. Uh, categorically of sources of funding or instructions that attach to the donation or other strings. Um, so that when we talk about expanding and maximizing. A, an open platform for public data, public use of data. Uh, to, to the extent that we are constrained in understanding. Any strings attached to the funding associated with the development of the data. Well, that data seems to me to be useless, uh, because we don't really know what the agenda is behind it. Has, has there been any exploration? And here we're looking at, you know, what we might do from a county perspective. Has there been exploration about um revisions or securing court orders that interpret FOIA? Such that the First Amendment rights of the donor are protected. I don't much care about that. I just want to know. What the, what the, the, the backroom deal was that led to that arrangement? And how that may impact the reliability of that data. So if we look at it from a public policy point of view, and we look within the purview of this commission in developing ordinances or. Policies that have teeth in them, seems to me FOIA might be a ripe territory for us. Do you have a view on that?
Yeah, many. So these are such potential issues. First, um, these data user agreements are subject to FOIA. Collaborators of mine and I, are, and myself, my team are working on FOIAing for as many of these as possible to learn. And, and what we're finding is that they vary quite a bit.
Can I interrupt you just to this degree? I, I would assume the agreement itself. Is, can be FOIAed. What I'm really looking at is what's behind the FOIA, the agreement. What were the discussions that led to it?
Yeah.
You know, so that there is transparency and accountability about how the donor was enticed to give this money. Or what was the, what was the underlying transaction that led to the donation? And it, it's not going to be on the four corners of that piece of paper.
Yeah, that's, so that's a black box, um, and one that's worth thinking about how to open up.
Okay.
Uh, there's, there's one really important point that's related to the university that I think we should lobby our new provo stick. Which is that the university, I think, for efficiency reasons, moved to a model where there is one massive data user agreement. That all university researchers are under in, are under. So that the university doesn't have to sign hundreds of these agreements for researcher per agency. There's efficiency benefits to that, but. That basically means that, and what are those, those negotiations that are, at least would be visible in the, in the individualized DUAs are gone now. And that the city agency, I, I know, because I, I attempted unsuccessfully to get some data from CPD through university channels. And in the past, it would be a matter of negotiating a contract that would be transparent to the public. Uh, and, and moving forward with that, but now that's gone, and it's just a simple. Either email exchange or phone conversation with someone in local government and it's thumbs up or thumbs down. And there's no record.
Well, I think, I think this is patterned throughout the universities uh nationally as well.
Yeah.
So if, if, go with me for a moment on this FOIA idea. If, if we tie to that some obligation. By law. To make a representation with penalties attached to it for perjury. Uh, that the money is without strings and this is to be fair and free scientific inquiry. Uh, and without instruction or other, you know, uh, expectation of a specific result. Have you thought about that sort of thing?
I haven't, but I, I would love to convene the right people.
Okay.
There, there are, there are economists, uh, I'm sure you know Ted Miguel's work in, in Berkeley who, who write about this kind of thing. Um, and because there's a growing transparency movement, even within social science precisely because of all of these concerns. Like economics has had all sorts of controversies because of tie certain researchers.
Let me, let me move you one other direction and then we'll see where we want to go. Um. As you see, there's a lot of intelligence and experience in this room right now. And you only add to it, and thank you for that. Um, yeah, we have finite amount of time.
Yes.
And the problems you're describing. Really accelerate problems, make them worse, exacerbate problems. So time is our enemy. Um, if you were to have before you. These kind of folks with this kind of commitment and understanding and experience and expertise. Uh, you're talking about task forces, okay? That doesn't necessarily define what the goal is here.
Sure.
It creates a mechanism to address a problem. So if I could oppose upon you to suggest. If you would have prioritized one or two public policy recommendations that we might entertain. With a view toward leading toward. An ordinance, a regulation, a policy that has teeth in it. Which not only would impact the county, but as has been our pattern. Leverage that thought leadership nationally because what we do is noticed. So given that opportunity, as enormous as it is, yet the limitations of this number of people. Uh, and the hours on, in their day and other things on their agendas, what might you suggest is a place for us to start? How might you frame? A specific thing to take on with a specific public policy objective?
Yeah, so uh, that puts me right on the spot.
That's where I want you to be. It's exactly the goal.
So if I have uh. Uh, to me, the biggest thing would be to part, to try and have. First things first, it has to be across governments and units, like it has to be across city, county and state. Um, and, 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 um, and the issue would be on data transparency around public safety. That's.
Well, let's suppose, let me just help you here.
Yeah, opening the books.
So let's suppose that if we make a sufficient case. Not only can we get it through the county board, but that same case should persuade. Uh, policymakers in other governmental units. So let's just make that assumption, because if we can't make that assumption, we're not going anywhere. So let's just put that to the side and assume that's a given. If it's good enough to get it through the county board, the same logic should prevail elsewhere. So, okay, so let's, that's number one, we've, we've checked that box. Next?
Yeah, I mean, I think it would be a matter of creating some sort of organization. Like a violence prevention agency or a public safety agency that. Law enforcement or sheriff's office would be part of, because I think they're part of it. But it, it would be like an umbrella agency that can bring. Different representatives of, let's say, health, the health sector. Or the economic development sector to, to tie each of the, and I think the academy as well, to, to bring a. You know, like a board-like structure or some sort of a.
You're talking about stability standards.
Stand, new standards, but I think, I think what's, I think.
Independent commissioned.
I'm not a policy expert, so the best way, the best way I can think of it is through the enterprise of social science.
Yeah.
Like, um, there's, there are community-oriented ways of doing science and producing knowledge of things.
Right.
The classic example is particle physics, bear with me with the example, but in Europe, researchers from across the world. Share data in order to better understand particle physics. I would try, my idea would be to try and replicate that model, but in the area of public safety where there's no silos. Where there's no, and I think part of the, part of this issue is the incentive structure in the academy that.
Yeah.
We're all trying to get access to data, but if we, if you bring together the right people or not competing with each other. And are trying and are operating in a open and a transparent way.
Yeah.
And I think that's, I think that's.
We are blessed by having as one of our commissioners, the chair of, of the leading such organization. So Commissioner Debo, you want to pick this up?
Related idea. Good to get your reaction on, you know, not necessarily a public policy expert, but given your background. You know, what, how you would, the lens that you would see this from. So there's, there's like a working group. Right now that's looking at creating an independent accountability agent organization. For the city and wider than the city.
Yeah.
That would be stood up, sort of like, if you're familiar with the Civic Federation and what it does, I don't know my finances. So this would be the equivalent. Type of organization looking at. How, you know, how do you call walls and strikes?
Yeah.
On what research says, research data, what works. Doesn't work, what has worked in other places, so. It would build on, you know, experiences of other cities and best practices across the country and say. How is the city of Chicago and the county? And there are other organizations that have been created in LA, in Dallas, in other cities that have done that. Some of them have been outside of government, uh, that have actually been inside of government, but here would be outside of government in, in our region.
Yeah.
Um, and that's sort of like in, being worked on right now, there's various parties that are coming to take research. And different kind of constituents that would. Really care about it.
Yeah.
What do you think about that? And, and are you familiar with other such organizations? And has that made a big difference?
I mean, to me, the, the way I really think about this is um. Is just the crucial importance of transparency and data sharing in order to build larger. Social scientific communities and partnerships with the communities. And I should also add. Giving communities the opportunities to collect data and analyze data themselves and bring their perspective as well, because. Um, you know, there's a, there's a whole literature on this concept called regulatory capture, which is. Oftentimes new agencies are created, and then oftentimes the entity that is being regulated. Will either through consulting firms or lobbying or backroom deals ultimately. Wins, wins over and ends up controlling the agency. And so. I think one of the chief ways to push back against that is to really insulate or, or institutionalize. Norms and standards around transparency and data sharing. And I think i- in that respect, you have to bring in researchers who. Aren't trying to create their own data shop. Through proprietary access, because in our world, proprietary access makes a great careers. I hand out this little sliver of data to my student, they go off and become a professor at Harvard and so on and so forth. You have to build in structures that basically prevent that kind of model from happening so that the only people who are entering are the folks who are doing this for. Other reasons. Yeah.
So, did you see, I'm, I'm not going to belabor this, but given that is kind of. The gold standard as you see it. Would the appropriate role for the commission? In your view, be to catalyze such an effort?
I mean, it could be. Um, it could be. I, I would also make a clear point that like. That there are some things that just can't be made public data, so like. Purple law prevents certain kinds of held information, but certain things related to court cases and criminal law, I think. Just are by the books, you, you can't share them, which is why I think it's, it's good, the inner, the. The, the key part of this is, and the risky part of it, is building new metrics and, and the new forms of data, so yeah.
Mission of the long, please.
It also may make sense, I think, a part of. Prior to getting people on board with how we organize data, to your point about shared values, we also have to have shared definitions. So I think. There may even be a role of the commission in the context of just this, how we're communicating these shared values, how we're communicating this new language. To even be able to get the change management done for folks to agree that we need to tackle these problems from a different angle. I think there's some runway work that has to be done to get folks on board with investing in the data apparatus. To believe that that data has some merit around. Which could be one of the conditions.
Yeah, that's interesting. There are steps, you know?
If I may, I think, um, I, I don't know if you had any.
No.
Other questions?
One, and then I would gladly turn this over. I, I just would invite you, uh, Professor Vargas, if you'd be willing. Uh, to work with the commission as we consider. Your important testimony today and the recommendations that you're offering and start to think through these issues and how we might. Uh, add greatest value, and we'd love to collaborate with you if you're, if you're of a mind to do so.
It's not a matter of mind, it's a matter of time, but yeah, I'd love to chat about this.
Fair enough. Appreciate that. And again, thank you for being with us, we're deeply grateful to you.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I, I'll call that, I, this information is extremely um valuable, particularly I, I found it, you know, myself. I've done a lot of work around data, actually working with national folks on data that is um. Being accumulated by law enforcement agencies. We worked on other bits of data like the gang database. Um, and how that data was being internalized and shared, so on and on another end, not necessarily. in regards to what you've captured here. And I think the big takeaway here that I'm hearing is the conflict, conflict of interest that exists with whoever is um, helping that agency other, you know, uh, fund the research or fund the programs. And I think that that, there's always um, skepticism that we're able to um, kind of boil down to when, when, when we're seeing this information, but also uh, when we're trying to figure out where do we go from here. And I think, um, you know, I've worked in Cook County at this point, I'm about to be 12 years. Uh, yes, 12 years in Cook County. And I think that that's one of the biggest challenges that we have encountered is to how to get the stakeholders, number one, to have the buy-in, to understand the importance, but also move forward and create something that is, and I, I say this often, but something that is actually fundamentally and structurally um, in implemented, so therefore it can be utilized. And we see a lot of the times, this board within the last four, four and a half, five years has changed tremendously. Out of seventeen commissioners, I believe we have like thirteen, something like thirteen new commissioners. So um, I think the, the important thing that I'm taking away from this is how to cultivate the buy-in from the different stakeholders. We have entities like the Justice Advisory Council that does very similar to what you've um, highlighted, looked at the different um, issues, looked at, has looked at the information and the data research and best practices to be able to get the stakeholders in the criminal justice and public safety arena to find solutions and then implement them. Um, they have come out with great ideas. We've seen great investment in violence prevention and we've seen great investment in things like, uh, you know, supporting the elimination of, of the bail bond, uh, et cetera. Um, so number one, that buy-in. Um, and number two, how to make something that is um, in many ways, being able to be implemented uh, across government agencies, which is a huge issue. And I think the big elephant in the room here is also the politics that goes into it. The fact that a lot of the times, uh, you know, the city doesn't always collaborate with the county, the county doesn't always collaborate with the city and there's always a lot of keeping with information. Um, so that is something that I think that the commission can also look at, right? We, uh, last year had spent a lot of time talking about the joint committee that was created in 2011 when, um, at the time Mayor Emanuel and Tony Pacman called joint forces and said, let's look at some information, let's look, let's open our books and see what type of um, collaboration we could do, what type of information we can share. That wasn't necessarily, you know, speaking to the, the, the law enforcement and, uh, and certain things that, that we've highlighted today. But that could be an opportunity to see if there is a, some type of incentive to look at the, a, a joint commission, a joint committee within the different agencies. And maybe we do narrow it down. I believe the last time that that was done, there were something like seventy-seven different, um, areas in government that could have been, um, some type of collaboration. So that may kind of play a little bit, um, into what Commissioner Debo just mentioned, um, that there are external, uh, pieces kind of being placed and an external, um, interest that we're seeing. And I think it's extremely important for Cook County to get engaged, given the fact that we, um, I mean, half of our budget goes to public safety. I mean, we have the court systems, you know, we have the sheriff's office, the state's attorney's office, public defender, public guardian. So we have a lot of wealth in regards to um, and a lot of, I believe vested interest in ensuring that we're doing good by our residents and moving forward some of this policy. So I, I, I think that there will be a, a lot to be able to take from the policy, uh, recommendations that were brought forward by, uh, Dr. Vargas. And I really thank him and, and of course, all the study that has been um, presented. Um, and I look forward to making sure that we, we figure out those pieces because I think those are going to be very crucial for us to be able to move um, the needle forward and, and really, uh, play a very important role, given the, the knowledge and experience that this commission, commission brings forward.
Madam Chairman, I just wanted to add that what you were referring to is the Chicago Cook Workforce Partnership that it endorsed to this day. And that is one of the things that occurred to me as we especially bring in to focus these, uh, so, social safety, health issues and crime, uh, where we can do something as a county. And I think, um, look at what Mark's saying, why are we bringing academics in? Because we learn from them and because I think they can learn from our, you know, side of the table as well. And I do agree, these issues determine our future and I'm hoping that your example of the Chicago Cook Workforce Partnership, uh, can be done irrespective of, uh, sometimes the politics may just move aside for a good idea. So thank you.
Thanks, Howard.
Thank you. Any, uh, final comments?
One more thing.
Sure.
Just to invite you to come back, as I know you mentioned, um, still doing, you know, some of the private donations. But as you get to the point of single private donations in the Chicago area, it would be interested to see that and your research.
You can pull that up pretty quickly. Absolutely.
And we'd love to connect you also with the Justice Advisory Council, again, has stakeholders from the chief judge's office, the sheriff's office and all of the other stakeholders in public safety sphere. Great. Vice Chair?
Yes, please.
Final, um.
Well, I think we may move on to our, uh, working groups if we may. Uh, so as luck would have it, Professor Vargas, uh, we operate through working groups, as you know. And, uh, one of the working groups that has, uh, paid considerable attention to some relevant topics here has a substantive report for us. So if I might invite, uh, Commissioner Austin and Commissioner Debo to, uh, to, uh, report on the, I think we're now calling it the Violence Prevention and Criminal Justice Working Group. And, uh, the efforts which are, are materializing and I, I think everyone would be very excited to hear the progress that you've been making. If you'd be so kind.
Thank you. I'm gonna take the opportunity to kind of tee it up, really, rather than lay out the whole thing, we're building on our kind of values framework that we presented in December. We kind of went back to the drawing board and we thought that we would operate our working across, uh, five zones of, of opportunity is, is what we call one zone with gun violence and community violence as a health challenge. So looking at the social determinants of health as the underlying framework. The next zone was pre-impulse release mentoring and CBI strategy, cognitive behavioral interventions. The next was community-based interventions focused on community well-being. And then lastly, the use of predictive data analytics, artificial intelligence and data science to support intervention strategy. So out of those, we know that there are a lot of low-hanging fruit and much longer systemic challenges to, to address. So we said, well, what do we go after? First, we decided that, uh, one near-term opportunity was around work at the, uh, County Hospital Trauma Center. And so we've had some meetings, follow up with that and with that.
Yeah, so, um, I think, and we touched on this in the December meeting, the thought is that County Hospital in particular, the trauma center in County Hospital might be a really interesting place, low-hanging fruit to start, um, to tackle several of the zones that, that Harry mentioned. You know, thought being if we could work with folks at the trauma center who are already doing a lot of work to connect victims that come in through trauma center, victims of violence, you know, gunshot violence, all kinds of violence, and their families with um, helpful supports, resources, case management, that in large part, CDIs are working on and providing. But deepen the connection there, sort of expand on what's going on. You know, look if they need more helpful resources inside of the trauma center to do that. Um, and take a look at what that might be. It sort of might be the right epicenter to start with. And so we actually had an interesting conversation with the Cook County Hospital Foundation that funds, um, you know, some private philanthropy that funds ways for the hospital to achieve better health outcomes, essentially for county residents. And they are interested in this issue and they are interested in potentially exploring, collaborating with the commission to look at this kind of a project, a pilot. Um, and so we're excited about that. We're excited about whether that foundation and, and also the hospital, you know, would have a lot of touch points in the work that we're working on. But as a next step, and this all is something that we want to present to you as an opportunity, of course, for your reaction, but also to get involved, is the next step, they are going to organize a tour of County Hospital and the trauma center. And we would like to invite any commissioners that might be interested to be part of that tour. To come and join and take a look and see and learn and see what ideas it germinates. And we would potentially invite outside experts as well to, you know, that could inform the work that we want to do to be part of that. So, you know, Mark and Harry have been part of this. I don't have anything else to add.
Yeah, I think you did a really good job explaining it. And a, a couple of things I would just build on what you're saying. One, this would be the first step in a collaborative relationship with both the hospital foundation and the hospital itself. And I think there are lots of different ways we could look at public health issues here and wellness issues uh, within the community. And the second is, it's an opportunity for the hospital to have a positive social impact outside its four walls. Whereas victims of gunshots, let's say, uh, show up at the trauma center and now with family members, um, what do you do with them when they're there? So they become emissaries out into the community of opportunities to kind of deal with gang violence, other forms of violence, uh, those, the folks who are standing outside hope really, and bring them back into a more productive course. And one of the things that, that Wendy and I learned, it was new to me at least, is that the University of Illinois has been providing social workers uh, to the trauma center, uh, to initiate such an effort. But, you know, if we approach this more on a multidisciplinary basis and identify what are the needs, what sorts of wraparound services, what forms of programming might we explore? And my, my hope will be, and we'll see how this works out, that if we can have a demonstration project and we look at from an evidence-based point of view and see what kind of data we can develop in terms of outcomes from introducing that kind of support, uh, and it appears to be positive and impactful. Uh, we can then look to the county to think in terms of ways in which this might be expanded throughout the county into other hospitals. And nationally, we now become a, a thought leader, a model that might be replicated. So this becomes really an entry point for us in establishing a relationship with the hospital foundation, but more importantly, with the, with the hospital itself and the hospital foundation's leadership, which, uh, Wendy very graciously brought into the conversation, seems to be very enthusiastic about collaborating with us. So I think this is still now another uh, thought leader type relationship we can, we can build over time. And, uh, you know, it's obviously a very serious player, uh, one that, uh, I think has an interest that's very much aligned with ours. So, uh, thanks Wendy and thanks, Harry, for you. So, uh, the, the, the offer that Wendy is, is made now is anyone who would like to participate in a tour that would be hosted for us and any other relevant thought leaders or experts uh, who may be interested in accompanying us, uh, to talk with the folks at the trauma center and beyond, uh, gain their buy-in to the sorts of approaches we would like to explore. And this, you know, I always say that we don't have a lot of good, uh, social petri dishes to test models and approaches to, uh, address social problems. Here, this becomes one. If it is a demonstration project and we have some control over how it looks and what it purports to do and then measure outcomes. You know, with that information now, we're talking about data here today, with that information, we can now figure out, okay, what do we do with this? How do we leverage it? How do we make the most of it? So I think it's a really, uh, interesting and enticing opportunity. So anyone who would like to participate in such a tour, uh, reach out to Harry, reach out to Wendy, reach out to me. Uh, and we'll, we'll, we'll set this thing up and, uh, hopefully within the next few weeks, make it happen and see where we go from there. So thanks to, uh, thanks to, uh, uh, Harry is the, the, the chair of the group and Wendy, who's, uh, service in this cause is a twenty-four hour day venture for her. And we're deeply grateful for everything you do within the commission and well beyond it. So, so thanks to you too.
And it's extremely timely, given the fact that, um, we are looking into investing more resources into the trauma center support services. Just at the last budget, we approved of, uh, $2 million for support services for survivors of sexual assault and domestic violence within um, the trauma center and the different, um, CCH institutions. So um, there are a lot of great resources, but we're looking into how to invest more. And I think the, the data portion is extremely important for us to make sure to capture and to really figure out and, and work with the different stakeholders.
And, and Howard, your ears may have been burning during our conversation because I indicated that I would love to have a conversation with you, given your expertise in data as well as your role in EDAC. Uh, and I think you might be a very, uh, key player in, uh, seeing this unfold the way it's, uh, has the opportunity to unfold. So I would invite you to consider that as an offer and, uh, allow you to reflect on it.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you so much. Yes.
Well, that, okay, that's, that was an easier sell than I thought it might be, but I'm and I know that once, once somebody says yes, you stop talking because all you can do is talk them out of it. So I'll, I'll thank you for that and we'll move on and we'll, we'll include, we'll include the invitation to, uh, participate in that tour. Uh, we'll make sure that your name is at, uh, high up in that list. So thank you for that.
Much appreciated.
Uh, so I think that's all we have on that working group, am I right? And I, and, uh, Roger, I'm sorry to learn that you are ill and especially grateful therefore that you're joining us today. You're still with us, I assume? That's a, that seems to be.
I'm still with us. Even though I'm ill, I'm still with you. It's not, it's not the end.
Well, oh, well, that's, that's, that is a relief to me and to many others. So thank you. I, I, I hope the end is nowhere in sight. So, um, I, I would like to move over to, um, uh, the, the working group that Cherry Thomas, uh, has, but Roger's been a very instrumental player in its deliberations. Uh, we had originally called it, uh, a working group looking at an industrial policy for the county. However, upon reflection, consideration and conversation, uh, we've decided to kind of expand its mission and, uh, rename it to more accurately describe the scope and depth of the opportunity. So Roger, if I could impose upon you to kind of fill, uh, uh, our colleagues in on our recent conversations and where we landed and where we're headed.
Yeah, I think, well, it's still a working title, but something moving towards community-owned assets or community-controlled assets. Um, because the original concept from the meeting last fall uh, with Alderman, former Alderman Puar, looking at the potential for a public bank as well as public ownership of, um, resources and institutions that, um, aren't in communities, um, and are clearly market failures, you know, really thinking about grocery retail, pharmacies, daycare, um, as some of the assets we were thinking about as really important to make sure that they're in communities and that they remain um, in those spaces and that there are, and this also includes housing. In our, in the presentation, but that, you know, there are models across the country, either, either one also is public banks, but also um, community ownership of groceries um, and other retail establishments where, you know, the private market has pulled out. You know, and, and really thinking about these as anchors for these communities, um, and that some of the conversation too is that they just aren't, you know, then if the county is owning them and then being managed, it's, you know, any profits aren't going off to some other entity, they're not going off to hedge funds who own these private, um, markets, you know, really thinking about the, um, the impending merger between Albertson's and Kroger's and how much that'll impact the number of Jewels, Jewel and Mariano's in the, in the city and actually cause, you know, some areas to lose grocery stores just because they're, you know, having a multi-billion dollar payout to their hedge fund owners. And that we want to be able to lock in and have those long-term ownership opportunities for the county and maintain them as, you know, true assets for the community. So exploring what that looks like and the, and then the policy vehicle for and I guess we need to reach. and next, we need to reach out to Commissioner Flores for participation in the next call to see whether this is something that, how much he would connect to and be run or supported by the Department Economic Development Team.
Yeah, welcome us discussing that. Reach out.
We will. And then also, you know, overlaps with the community investment vehicle work. You know, where the, um, collaborations there as well.
Yeah, I think we may very well wish to consolidate two working groups, Kristen Freeman and Wendy Raymer's group into this one. Because in each of these cases, not only is it a market failure or at least a market gap, because on a risk-adjusted basis, we can't promise a, uh, reasonable return on investment to private sector players, but it also is a situation where by, by virtue of the absence of those kinds of products and services within the community, those communities continue to diminish in opportunity. So it's a way of lifting up communities, it's a way of creating jobs, it's a way of contributing to the tax base. So, you know, it, it, any one of these things, and certainly in combination, many of them would lift up all boats. And I, I think this is a very important initiative, a complex one. And we've already started to talk about a mechanism by which these things might be considered and mapped out and what sort of a strategy we might have and what kinds of players we might engage. But I think it's something that, you know, stay tuned for this. I think we're going to see uh, a lot of the activity coming out of this working group, and I think it's going to be exceptionally meaningful. So Roger, thank you for that presentation, particularly given your ill health, and I hope by tomorrow you're feeling a hundred percent better. Um, are there, and I, I, I do want to, um, be respectful of time here. Are there any other working groups that, uh, have reports prepared that they would like to, uh, deliver to the commission? I, I was not aware of any, but I wanted to look for the, uh, chairs of the working groups. So we've not yet heard from the opportunity. Should they have something they'd like to report? So if not, I'll turn it back to you, Commissioner Naya. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Um, so there, there's not much else on the agenda today. I mean, we had, uh, some old business. I know that that's been the updates with the, within the committees, the working groups, I should say. Um, and I'll just, uh, again, reiterate, um, the importance and the urgency in getting in those, um, resumes and bios, uh, so that we can make sure that by the March, you all are fully approved and reappointed. I know a few of you had just joined us a few months ago, um, but we have to uh, follow with the ordinance states and, um, do that. So I can't again, stress enough, I'm just, uh, ensuring that we get those, those documents in as soon as possible. Uh, and, you know, again, relay any questions that you may have. Most folks have questions regarding the affidavit and we can help you complete that if, yeah, if we need additional support. Um, with that said, I know, um, there was no other, uh, new business on, on, on my part, so we'll open it up for any um, announcements that you may have. And then we will uh, proceed and we can, uh, make an announcement for the next meeting. We'll promise, we'll, we'll, uh, make sure that BOT is with us so that we can get the, the screens up. I know this is difficult, uh, to view the PowerPoint, but um, you should have the slides, the deck in your email address that was sent out in the middle of the the presentation. So you should have it. Um, and again, we'll try to work with BOT to get these mics working and the, the screens fully operational. So I'll open it up if anybody has any um, announcements. I know usually any upcoming events, um, that you all would kind of like to share with, with the rest of the group. Yeah.
If I could just share, I'm very excited that, um, talking about public credit partnership, um, the city, the county and United Way have partnered to fund finally a two-on-one system in this region. So it's fully operational. I know that during the pandemic, we were getting many calls from people that did not have easy access to social service support. They didn't know where to call for housing or food or help with the rent. Um, so I'm very excited that this region, which is the last region in the US to get in, they end up in running two-one system, finally has one. So, um, this weekend, because it's two-on-one this weekend, we will be having launching a big marketing campaign. So you should be seeing it all over the place, the boards. Um, the news, but I'm very excited that this region finally has a two-on-one thanks to this partnership with United Way, the city and the county. So things do happen better when there is strong partnerships. I'm very excited about that.
Thank you. That's wonderful.
And thank you. I was invited to the press conference and we were able to get very valuable information. We'll be more than happy to share with you all. Um, we're extremely excited. I think we, we saw a lot of folks get confused, um, not know where to turn, um, when the pandemic hit. And it really taught us a valuable lesson in, in collaboration and sharing the resources are getting out to, um, the individuals that needed the most. So thank you for that reminder. It's a great initiative. Um, yes, Commissioner Cooley?
Yeah, we're, um, Chicago Food Policy Action Council in partnership with the Cook County Department of Public Health is hosting the Chicago Food Justice Summit this week. And tomorrow is in person at the UIC Student Center East. Uh, we've been really excited to be working with the county on that. So, you know, a lot of promotion around urban agriculture, small-scale food enterprises, food retail opportunities. Um, building on the good food purchasing policy, which we passed through the um, commission several years ago and building upon the successes there. Really excited for that ongoing partnership with Cook County Public Health. They've committed over $4 million of, um, ARPA funds towards the initiative and in making investments in small-scale food businesses who are also doing meal provisions and being fresh food available. So really excited for that partnership. And that's tomorrow all day.
Great, thank you. Would you mind sharing the flyer so we can, uh, ensure that everybody has it in their inbox?
Yes, I'll drop the link.
Thank you so much. Great. Any other announcements? Yeah, great. Well, um, well, uh, I, I'm looking forward, I'm going to actually be at the NACO conference this weekend, um, the National Association of Counties. I'm not sure Bureau Chief Flores will be there. So if there's any, uh, ideas, um, or information sharing, um, that we can make sure to, you know, share with you all, um, we'll, we'll be sure to do that. We'll be doing a presentation and a presser regarding our guaranteed income pilot, um, which, uh, we just got the, the initial, uh, results of the participants. Um, we're very excited about that. Um, so Cook County is, is leading a lot of great things and, um, we're excited to share with the rest of the nation. Um, the last thing that I was just going to announce is the upcoming meeting. Um, we're going to be meeting in March ninth here again. Um, feel free to reach out, um, earlier. You have an, an impediment, um, in getting here physically. Well, obviously, we're, again, we're encouraging everyone to join us, um, here and we'll, again, work out and iron out any tech, uh, difficulties prior to the meeting. Um, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn if there's nothing else. Move by Commissioner Malone. Thank you. Second, my Commissioner Flores. All those in favor signify by saying hi. All those opposed. Guys have it. We're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.